I'd like to welcome everyone to the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry County Council Meeting for Monday, July 22nd. Welcome everyone. Middle of the summer, our agenda's not too, too heavy, so it's kind of nice. We've got a few guests in the audience. Madam Clerk, call to order.
It's moved by Counselor McDonald, second invite Counselor Laundrie, that the meeting in the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry be hereby called to order.
All those in favor? It's carried, thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Any additions or deletions? Motion for the agenda?
It's moved by Counselor Laundrie, seconded by Counselor McDonald, that council approve the agenda.
All those in favor? It's carried. Any disclosure appear any interest? Seeing none. Adoptions of the minute for June 16th, 2025. Madam Clerk.
It's moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor McDonald, that the minutes of the meetings, including the in-camera minutes of the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry held June 16th, 2025, be adopted as circulated.
Any errors, omissions, anything notable? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's carried, thank you. And we're on to delegations. 5.5. 5.1, sorry. And it is my pleasure to recognize some of the people in the audience today, and especially to introduce one of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry's brightest young leaders, Cameron Fraser, as recipient of Ontario Winter Games Legacy Award. And I want to just add to that, not just Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry, but South Glengarry and Williamstown, my hometown. And actually, if you go to the north end of our farm, they're just a half a mile down on the concession to the north of us, so a neighbor as well, so congratulations. So this award was established in 1994 and was designed to celebrate the achievements of young amateur athletes who not only excel in their sport, but also lead with character, give back to their community and inspire those around them. And Cameron embodies all of these qualities and more. She's a recent graduate of Charland District High School. Cameron has shown exceptional dedication both on and off the field. Whether serving as captain or winning Most Valuable Player on the volleyball court, basketball court, soccer pitch, helping guide Cornwall Lady Royals to provincial championship, her leadership shines through. Cameron's contributions go far beyond athletics. She's valedictorian, honor roll student, community volunteer, role model for her peers, and she's from coaching, helping coach minor soccer, to serving in student council, Cameron leads with humility, compassion and drive. We went through these awards, there was quite a few people, and we went through with a fine-tooth comb, and these were all exceptional students, but this one rose to the top. So just want to say congratulations, it's well-earned, and on behalf of the counties, we're so proud of you, wish you all the best. And if you would like to come to the front, oh, and I should add, she's going on to Queens It's kind of special to get to do something like that. We don't do that every meeting. We'll move on to our next delegation, Eastern Ontario Regional Network Cell Gap Project Update, and we have Jason St. Pierre and Lisa Severson.
We've done enough of these presentations, every room we go into is different, it takes Lisa and I a minute to figure out which buttons we have to press. We've done enough of these presentations, every room we go into is different. It takes Lisa and I a minute to figure out which buttons we have to hit and which ones not to hit. More importantly, which ones not to hit, probably, so. Good morning, all, and thank you for the invitation, the opportunity to come and give an update on the Eastern Ontario Regional Network Cell Gap Project. We'll also be sharing some information today on the strategic plan, which we've just finalized with our board member, which we'd like to acknowledge Karma and her efforts in that as well, so we'll talk about that today, so. Just the three, couple of topics there. Sorry, I'm just trying to figure myself out here as well. On the Cell Gap Project, just as an overview, reminders, we'd like to, to give a, a quick overview. Our goals of the project is to achieve 99% of coverage throughout Eastern Ontario where people work, live and travel on major roadways, so they can make and receive basic phone calls. What you don't think is much of a stretch target, until you're actually out in some of these territories driving around, and you have a new appreciation for some of the challenges to make those coverages. 95% of that same area is to have standard definition coverage, so this is where you can make basic data-type applications such as email, web browsing and basic social media-type applications. And 85% of that same footprint coverage area, where we'll have high-definition coverage. And what we're looking through with this is they can support video conferencing, moving streaming and other more data-intensive applications, so. 85% target on that, again, across Eastern Ontario is a rather challenging target, but we'll share with you, we are achieving great success in that right now. Overall, the cell project, this is the map of the area, so there's 257 new SAP tower sites that are being built throughout Eastern Ontario. Of that, we're about 54% complete, so not exactly where we wanted to be or hoped for at this point. We did have a number of challenges early on in the process around the duty to consult, and some of the obligations were provided to ERN from the province to ensure that we were able to meet those. There was about a 13-month delay on the project due to that. But the good news is, we are ramped up now and we are making great progress to achieve that goal, which is to be completed by July of 2026. We have 311 uplifts, and an uplift is where Rogers had existing, and sorry, I should mention, this project is in partnership with Rogers Communications, so to fully achieve the service benefits of this, it is primarily going to impact Rogers customers, so new customers. This was done through a competitive RFP process, where we had two bidders bid on that project. Our original plan, we were hoping that we'd be able to have enough funds to be able to support multiple carriers. Unfortunately, when we did the cost analysis, it was not possible, so we did go to a competitive RFP process. Rogers was a successful proponent in that process, so this project will be done through them. I will, and I am sort of sidetracking a little bit here, but one of the benefits, though, regardless whether it's a Bell customer, a Rogers customer or any other carrier, is that under the 911 services, anybody in these areas who have the ability to connect to a tower will be able to get 911 services, so we will see a service improvement on that. Also, the infrastructure that's being built will be able to sustain additional carriers, so if, you know, a Bell or another carrier wishes to come through, there is the opportunity for them to co-locate on those tower sites as well, so that infrastructure being built is strong enough to support additional carriers. So back to the slide, though, on the uplifts, we have 311 uplifts, so this is where Rogers has existing equipment. This was an older technology. Through this project, we've upgraded that into the 5G technologies, which is, allows for that high-definition and those more data-intensive transfers. And we have 75 sites where we have co-locations, and co-location is where a third-party tower is owned by, or, sorry, the tower's owned by a different carrier than Rogers or organization. And we have 75 of those, where 88% of those been finished. So overall, when we look at the investment being made through this project, it's about a $300 million program. When we look at the investment, we're about a 30 to 1 right now, and that's a basic ROI. We will be looking at next year, when we come to do our, hopefully, our final update on the Cell Gap Project, a more intensive, more data-driven ROI at that point. Under the United Counties of SDNG, if we look at the project itself, good news here is on the upgrades, we are 100% complete on those, so that is positive. On the co-locations, we are also 100% complete on those, and we have 11 of the 12 sites completed from the new builds, so. From a, from our program, doing very well, about 97% of the overall program in the United Counties has been completed. If, again, we look at that basic ROI, the county's made an investment of just over 700, or $575,000. From that, there's about $16.6 million of infrastructure investment being made throughout the United Counties. So again, basic ROI in that, we're about a 29 to 1, so a pretty good return of investment for that, those funds that were issued. On the project itself, and I spoke to this all just quickly on this one, overall, we have about 100, it's a little bit dated, this slide, we're about 135 new sites now that are finished, and about 66 co-locations that are done, so just about 85, 86% of our program is complete. You'll notice, though, that year five, which is the year we are in right now, we do have a very heavy program to, to complete, and part of that was that delay that we had. We are looking to, to deliver 112 sites this year, and we are on target to be able to do so, as well as nine of the co-locations to be finished. Next year, 24 sites, but that's from January till the end of July, so we will really just be looking to close up the program and two co-locations. As discussed, just the last site left to be done in the United Counties is on County Road 16 and County Road 18 in South Dundas, and we are expecting to have that in service in 2026. On this map here, we're just showing a comparison of the projected HD coverage, and we did choose to use the high-definition, just because that is the hardest coverage to get, based on the footprint coverage. You'll notice that, based on our propagation from a drive in the early of 2024, we're seeing about 87% complete against the overall plan, so a target of 85, we are projected at that point to have been about 87% and doing well. When we work on the propagation of 100% of the towers being built and completed, though, we are looking at a final footprint of about 94% coverage, so. From that perspective, on the high-definition, we are achieving or slightly exceeding our targets, if everything continues to go the way it is. This is a very similar map. Difference here, in 2021, we did a snapshot, and this is actually a drive test. We physically have an organization drive the major roadways throughout Eastern Ontario and do the propagation testing against the current coverage. In 2021, you'll notice there is a fair number of areas, especially in central Eastern Ontario, that were not covered with any sort of coverage. And in 2024, we're already seeing an improvement, and in working with local municipalities and with the counties here in SDNG, we have done some drive tests in this area, and we are seeing some very positive returns on those results. In 2024, just an overview, sort of preaching to the choir here, I guess, but it's been a busy year in communications. We were hoping to be able to make more announcements over the past year, but we had a couple of elections slow us down a little bit and get in our way. Now that those have been completed, we did just make an announcement about, about six weeks ago or so, I guess it was, on the progress of the project with the federal and provincial governments. We are looking to do another announcement later this fall, but overall, it's been a, continues to be a busy year, and as an organization, we are here to support both the county level and the local levels of municipalities. And we spend a great deal of time educating, supporting, talking to residents, not in this area, but in some other areas. We've had some challenges through the LUA process, so we are making ourselves available to ensure that we are there to support with a technical knowledge in those conversations. We continue to issue our newsletters and our updates, and we continue to accept a number of public inquiries, not just for the Cell Gap, but also for the broadband coverage throughout Eastern Ontario. Although ASIP is not fall, and ASIP is the provincial broadband program, although that does not fall directly within our mandate, we still feel that it's our job to support the municipalities with those types of questions or issues as they arise. And the last point there is, we've spent quite a bit of time working with the indigenous communities throughout Eastern Ontario to ensure that we are making sure our portion of that duty to consult process is adhered to and kept. On the timeline, so on the existing towers, we are 100% complete across Eastern Ontario for the, the upgrades. The Land Use Authority, we're probably about 90%, 95%, we're into the, sort of the tough ones at this point right now, working through the final processes. The indigenous consultation process will run throughout the life of the project until, we have till 2026, but those relationships will continue into 2029. Newer, new tower construction is to be completed by July of 2026, so although it seems like it's a ways out, that 12 months is going to go by pretty quickly for us. And announcements will be ongoing throughout the life of the projects, and then pursuing other initiatives. So we are at that point, as Eastern Ontario Regional Network, where we understand and appreciate that the Cell Gap Project is coming to an end. The broadband programs are more or less going to be completed, and we are continuing to look for additional opportunities where we can bring a regional approach to support municipal, whether it be at the county level or at the, the partner municipalities, to support them in regional initiatives and opportunities. I have two slides in here, just on the evolution of the telecommunications market. I won't go into detail on them, but the ones that impact us most directly, Blackstone Networks is a essentially a capital, capital fund that made an investment into Rogers, so where it impacts us is Rogers is our partner. They did make an investment of $7 billion into the backhaul network, although it will have no impact on customer service or who customers interface with. As far as that goes, we felt it was important to be transparent with, with groups that we work with, such as yourselves. The other one that your staff, or you may start hearing a little bit more about, is Redwood, the Redwood Infrastructure Group. They are a partner of Rogers now, but they are doing a number of the fibre-to-the-home projects throughout Eastern Ontario. So you may start seeing them make requests on permits, changes within permits, so that they're recognized as the lead applicants on those on behalf of Rogers. They've been very, actually good to work with and very proactive in reaching out to municipalities over the last few months. And then the rest of this just says, there's a lot of turmoil in the telecommunications market, and I'm not sure it's going to get any, any easier anytime soon, but a lot of divestment in tower sites, divestment to cover debt, et cetera, so. Under the strategic plan, we are now, so.
Before you go on, do you have a question?
Good morning, Jason and Lisa. Seeing that we're, looks like after we finish in South Dundas, we'll be at 100, like 100%, we'll be completed. We're still experiencing dead zones, and I think of County Road 34 at the Brown House, and then 34 again, south of Alexandria, where it's, it drops off almost completely. Will we be stuck with those, or will there be something in the future that will help with some of these other areas? I'm not sure if there's any dead zones in other areas, but we, you know, just thinking of that, it's on a county road and one of the most-travelled roads in SDNG, so.
So the timing is good on that, because if there are gaps like that, we'd like to be aware of them. We are aware of a few down towards the river that have been a challenge over the past number of years, that we've worked with Rogers to try to change the angle of the antennas to close those gaps. But if there are gaps like that, we would like to be aware of those. The only question I would have around that is who the carrier is, if it's with Rogers and the gap is there.
One Rogers.
You're with Rogers, of course, so yes, and absolutely, we want to be aware of that, so we can take that back to them and identify those gaps.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. One more on the first part of the presentation? Right?
Thank you. Yeah, so there is plans to extend the service beyond the current map. Dead zones still remain. That's what you're saying to Councillor McDonald?
We only have till July of 2026 is our funding model, so if there are opportunities or there are concerns, we'd like to be aware of them. I'm not sure that we would have enough time to build additional infrastructure at this point, but there might be ways that we can close those gaps if we're aware of them.
Thank you. Another question. How does ERN ensure that all carriers, like Bell, Rogers, Telus offer service at each tower?
So, under the co-location agreements, we can't force or mandate Bell to go into an area or Telus or Kojiko or any of the other carriers. All we can do is try to entice them to the fact that the infrastructure's there and they don't have to make that capital investment. So as an organization, we have shared the tower locations with the additional carriers. It's up to them, then, to write their own business case and decide if the investment is worth it for them. I expect that over the next year or two years, and I'm not exactly sure, the co-location process can take a while sometimes, depending on, on the relationship of the carriers. But I expect that in the next couple of years, we will see some of these towers co-located on by, by additional groups. In this area, we are seeing, Kojiko has just announced that they're using an MVNO, a mobile virtual network strategy, to deploy a wireless solution. So that's just come out in the last, I think, week or two, so we might see additional carriers that we hadn't thought of before. This close to Quebec, video tron's always a possibility as well, but those, there is capacity and space on there for those co-locations. We just, we can't force anybody onto it, but we can try to entice them through that.
Thank you. Anything further on the, the Cell Gap before we go to strategic update? Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Ward, and thank you to my fellow councillors for bringing that question up. So, Jason or Lisa, would, would, would there be a push by Rogers to inform people that they want better cellphone coverage? That, are they going to promote the idea that they're the ones that have the better coverage? Or how is that going to be promoted if, if I'm with someone else? Not hearing this today, I might just go along believing that this is as good as it is. So how are we going to, or do we have to inform people that they should swing to Rogers, or how is that going to work?
Well, and this is sort of the challenge that we have, is although Rogers are a partner in this project, there are other carriers as well, so we've left that to Rogers with their data and information to really put together their campaigns on how to market these. We are seeing a number of digital, primarily digital campaigns right now around their cell coverage. The Highline Games, two years ago, they had a major push on, and they'll be, I believe they'll be attending again this year, so they are doing some local marketing like that. They're also starting to promote some of their wireless broadband, which, although broadband is not part of the ERN project, because we were only to support really the mobile data and cell part, the technology will also allow for wireless broadband, residential broadband, so they are actively starting to engage with local dealers, with digital campaigns, to promote those projects and products as well. So we expect that Rogers, over the next few months, will be really pushing and promoting some of these programs and projects they have. Typically, they'll have a back-to-school campaign, there's usually typically a Christmas campaign. But the infrastructure here in Eastern Ontario, especially in SDNG now, is at the point where I expect that they will really start to promote this, this fall.
Thank you. Anything further? Carry on, Jason.
All right, into the strategic plan. So we are almost a year into our strategic plan here now. We did develop a five-year strategic plan last year. Really looking at the opportunities where, as an organization, we felt we could support municipalities, as well as the provincial and federal government, across primarily Eastern Ontario, but we are not opposed to going outside of Eastern Ontario if the opportunity arises. We have had opportunities in the past with Nova Scotia and some stuff in Northern Ontario, and we'll continue to look at those. But it was really, as a, as an organization, we recognize that cellular and broadband are almost at the point of completion, so there's not a huge runway for us in that opportunity. It was with that that we really started to look at other opportunities with the board that we could take on as an organization, and really felt that was within our wheelhouse of where we could support municipalities. It was with that that we actually actively changed our letters of patent, which as a non-for-profit organization doesn't happen every day, so there was a, a learning for us on that. But we felt there were four key areas that, as an organization, we've grown and we've been able to develop a relationship and a reputation of success. And under those, that was the project management services, which is exactly in what we're in today. Infrastructure project services on a large scale across multiple organizations, what we work on today in the cell space. Technology service support, which although there is a very good EOIT team, the Eastern Ontario IT team, we look to support them and for them to support us and look for partnerships there. And municipal support, which, yes, is very generic and very general, and that is by design. We do work very closely with the EOWC and the EOMC, as well as the EOLC, at what projects might be coming down and where there might be opportunities for us to support on that regional approach. Some of the current initiatives that we're working on right now is we are, we did work on a and develop a successful duty to consult process, and this is something that we are looking to expand on for municipal support, as well as provincial support. We have a rather large library of documentation and process and policy pieces in there that we are sharing, actively sharing now with the province and some local municipalities. We are in the midst of a trial right now, are about to be into a trial with Lenar County on the automated speed enforcement. This is an interesting opportunity that was not quite within our broadband or cellular space, but from a regional perspective, we felt we could support the county and then independently support their lower tiers as well on the administrative, to reduce the administrative overhead and challenges that may take place on a regional aspect of that for automated speed enforcement. We're working with the Canadian Internet Registry Authority. We're working with the Canadian Internet Registry Authority to actually test the broadband performance across Eastern Ontario, and that's not just on cellular, but also on wireline services. And we're identifying those areas that might be underperforming or not covered, because under the ACIP program, there were a number of areas that were missed due to mapping issues or data collection challenges. We're leveraging our partnership with Sierra, which municipalities actually have access to for free now as well, to collect that data and analyze that to find other opportunities for broadband. The Very Last Mile prem, which is an ACIP project from the province, we've been successful in supporting a couple of local municipalities now in gaps through that, as well as a number of GIS opportunities, working with Digital Twin, which is a primarily an urban model, but we are looking at bringing that out into a more rural model as well for municipalities. So so for a team of 12 people, we have a number of projects in flight right now. Just quickly on this, the Sierra testing, and this is more, we are looking to promote that and we are through LinkedIn, have done a number of postings on this, but we really are looking to collect the data on the broadband performance throughout the municipalities, really so we can understand where the gaps might be and come up with solutions to try to close those while there's still funding available from the province to address these types of challenges. Whether it be wireline or wireless, we can test both of those and we were able to collect that as well, including the satellite data, although we are seeing some reduction in the amount of satellite users that we did maybe even a year ago. So we are looking for participation across Eastern Ontario to really try to crowdsource that data into a model that we can collect that data. That's it?
Thank you very much. Questions on the strategic part of it in the next few years? Karma, go ahead. Oh, sorry, I should be saying councillor Williams.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to acknowledge Jason and Lisa. They lead a small but mighty team managing a huge $300 million project, and it's come with its fair share of challenges. Just let me say that NIMBYism is alive and well, but they've managed these challenges very, very ably. When I joined EORN, it's a very fascinating board to sit on, and I do believe that I was given, I think, a document with 10 pages of acronyms in it. And you'll notice that there are a lot of acronyms that's used in this organization. But EORN is busy refreshing itself and looking forward to a vibrant future. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you very much. Appreciate the update and look forward to more work continuing to be done. Thanks to our guests. So we're moving on to section eight, bylaws. 8.1, stop up and close and convey 57 Queen Street, Chesterfield. Madam Clerk?
It's moved by councillor Broad, seconded by councillor Laundrie, that bylaw number 5500, being a bylaw to stop up, close and convey the portion of Queen Street, Chesterfield, established by Plan 35, which is being utilized for residential purposes, being Part Lot 94, north side of Nation River, Plan 35, being Part Two on Plan 8R 6014, North Dundas, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
Thank you very much. And Director Luck is going to speak to it by the looks of it.
Thank you. So in February of this year, a prospective buyer was in the process of purchasing the property located at 57 Queen Street in Chesterfield. And during this time, county staff were made aware that a portion of the subject property's house is actually located within the historic right-of-way of Queen Street. So looking back historically, a similar scenario was encountered back in 1981 for properties along Queen Street directly west of the subject property. The properties west of the subject property were within the historic right-of-way, but they were passed under bylaw 4045 to quit claim deed. However, at this time, our subject property was not included. So prior to 1981, Queen Street was actually realigned and it now follows a curved horizontal alignment. As such, our subject property will never be used for the purpose of the county road. To ensure the process is cleaned up for future homeowners and that solution is consistent with past practices, is being proposed that Part Two on registered plan 6014 be stopped up, closed and conveyed to the owner at 57 Queen Street in Chesterfield.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's carried. Thank you. 8.2 is encroachment agreement at Finch, and I won't read the whole thing, but Madam Clerk?
It's moved by councillor Jay McDonald, seconded by councillor A. McDonald, that bylaw number 5501, being a bylaw for the purpose of establishing an encroachment agreement between the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry and 13066266, Canada Inc., at the lands legally described as Finch, Concession 10, North, Part Lots 12, and 13, Part Road Allowance, Registered Plan 52R 8530, Part Run, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
Go ahead, Director Luck.
So SDG Counties sign bylaw permits privately owned signs to be erected within the right-of-way provided the valid encroachment agreement has been issued by SDG Counties and the owner. The standard right-of-way width for an SDG Counties' road typically extends 13 meters from the center line of any roadway. However, the proposed sign location, sorry, at the proposed sign location, the right-of-way actually extends approximately 35 meters due to a previous realignment of County Road 12. Given the unusually wide right-of-way in this area, it's not practical to place the subdivision sign entirely on private property. We're recommending that council enter into encroachment agreement to allow the owner of the subdivision entrance sign to be placed approximately 20 meters from the center line of County Road 12.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's carried. Thank you very much. We're on to consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
It's moved by councillor Laundrie, seconded by councillor McDonald, that all items listed under the consent agenda section of the agenda be received for information purposes.
Anybody have anything that they need to bring up from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. Moving on, number 10, boards and committees. I guess I'm first. Some things that the warden was involved in since our last meeting. I was quite honored to be able to go to the Children's Aid Society Annual Awards. Quite, had never been before, a moving evening. Some young people that have faced incredible challenges and being successful in graduating high school or post-high school, you know, and it was quite an evening. I really enjoyed it. Got to go to the Prescott Russell Wardens Golf Tournament. Want to thank CEO Adams for carrying the team. And it was a good day. Highway 138 Public Meeting, I think quite a few of the people in the room were at the 138 Public Meeting. Things are moving forward finally, though it'll be a few years, but moving forward. Glengarry Memorial Hospital Appreciation, Donor Appreciation Event. Just a heads up, they've launched a campaign to raise $3.5 million for a CT scanner. Would be a great benefit to the area, not just Alexandria, but it takes the pressure off the others in the area. So that's underway now. Ministry of Tourism Announcement, everybody knows about this one, $82.2 million. Minister Cho and Steve Clark were down for that, as well as our own MPP Quinn. So happy to be there. Big deal. Good for South Dundas, South Stormont, the whole area, but those two townships are going to be moving. 138, we had a working group meeting after the public meeting. We're just kind of keeping it, things moving and met with the minister and our minister, Minister Quinn and a few others just to make sure things are still moving forward. Answer any unanswered questions. Had a Police Services Board meeting. The Morris Glen Grand Opening in Morrisburg. Appreciate the invitation to go to Morrisburg. New building was, it was beautiful, actually, you know? Anybody would be thrilled to live there. And it was good to see. Minister Flack was down for that and Minister Quinn was there and Mayor Townsdale and Mayor Broad. It was a good announcement. Sports Infrastructure Funding Announcement at our own arena. Was happy to, so Glengarry was happy to receive just a little over $900,000, and I think South Dundas may have got something as well. Wasn't at that one, but it's all about the River Festival in Morrisburg. Nice event, glad to be there. Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus Meeting last Friday. And then in the afternoon, we had an electus officials meeting at Cornwall City Hall with local elected officials. Have more fair opening ceremonies. And then yesterday was MPP and MPs picnic. So that's kind of some of the things I was up to this month. Go ahead, councillor McDonald.
Just a question on your 138 Working Group Meeting. Just wondering, can we receive updates on what's happening with that? We're all getting still questioned about what happened at that meeting and I think follow-up, you know, a lot of times when we go to these kinds of meetings, you know, we, everybody's on board and then everything just kind of goes away. And I really think that we should be very proactive in maybe looking at some short-term solutions coming up. So I don't know what was discussed at your meeting, so it'd be great if we could all get an update of that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that, you kind of summed the meeting up in a nutshell right there, because we were in the same boat, looking for updates, wondering if there's any short-term wins, this sort of thing. So maybe CEO Adams could kind of send something out to everybody. I will just say that they didn't seem, it doesn't seem like the ministry is looking to do a lot of quick fixes. They're saying, oh, we want to get it right the first time. We want to do it as one big, you know, tender, I guess. So let's hope that if they do that, they've got to include all the roads then, because it doesn't sound like they want to revisit this. But the downside to that is we may be waiting till 2028 to see it happen. But anyway, we'd be happy to send out an update to what happened. Thank you. Anything else further for me? Joint Liaison Committee. Don't think we've had a meeting since then. Library Board. Councillor Broad?
Sure, I can share our meeting from the Winchester branch. We're back in North Dundas, June 19th. We reviewed our book club notes from Animal Farm. We discussed the current stats and I've asked Rebecca to come back, Director Luck to come back in our September meeting with the stats to date and our marketing plan to see how they overlay and what things we may be thinking about in the fall. We kicked off the performance review. We discussed, every kid had a card, so there's a program we did in the spring with every kid have a card, so we're reaching out to the schools and we come up with some other ideas. In fact, Director Luck and I and a teacher from Iroquois Public School, they're going to meet and try and drive more of the reading to kids in the class. And there's lots of public officials do that, so we're going to kick off a program there. And we also have a upper candidate district school board with a parent group and SDNG a partnership to have library books that are required for the school to work through the library system. So that was exciting news. So and we're off in July and we'll meet back in September.
Thank you. Questions for councillor Broad? Police Services Board Chair, Mr. McGillis?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I can talk about the department commander, Mark Hemrick. He shared a lot of the stats regarding different concerns. We also, I was also given a performance appraisal, which I had a meeting prior to our board meeting. And in the appraisal was, we had to come up with five different priorities. I'll give you an example. The one priority, one of the options that we have here regarding the appraisal performance is reduce the number of motor vehicle collisions, which was my number one priority or will be. And I can give you another thing regarding the outcomes. The outcome, increase public awareness, safe driving habits, improve driver behavior, decrease in motor vehicle collisions through the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry. And also under the actions part is the media officer will use social media and media releases to promote traffic safety and educate the public about collision and the causes. So things like that we'll be talking about during the performance. And we do have another meeting coming up that we already booked for the fall. I don't think we have the exact date, though, so it's not booked. So also, we had one of our board members, Todd alone, he went to a conference and he asked if Kimberly would be kind enough to ask Graham White, which is our local representative for the police board, to speak and give us all the new updates that, you know, that he learned that when he was there at the conference. So, you know, he says we might be behind some of the things, but overall, he sees our board and talked to other members of other boards and he says we're in good standing too. So it's good to hear that when somebody goes there and they can do some comparables, that makes us feel good that we're doing a good job. So yeah, that's some of the things that we had to talk about.
Thank you very much, councillor McGillis. Very good update. Anybody have any questions for councillor McGillis? No? Eastern Ontario Health Unit, councillor Williams, I guess?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, so yes, we had a Eastern Ontario Health Unit meeting on June 26th where the audited financial statements were presented. The audit was a clean audit. With regards to the RSV vaccine, this vaccine will be available in all long-term care homes across Prescott Russell SDG. And the RSV for infants has been on pause over the summer and will be available again in October. Good news, there's been no new cases of measles in Prescott Russell SDG as of the June 26th meeting. The draft strategic plan for the Eastern Ontario Health Unit is almost ready to be presented, and Dr. Paul will be presenting it at a later date. The health unit was present to provide health care for 377 refugees at the DevCor Center and those refugees which were then sent to bury. We had a long conversation around the board table about the importance of municipal cooling centers during these extended heat waves, as not all municipalities apparently have been opening cooling centers. And it was, I think, it was mostly municipality in Prescott Russell. So the board asked Dr. Paul to send a memo around to all municipalities, so all of the lower tiers across SDG and Prescott Russell should have received a memo encouraging these cooling centers to be open, because municipalities are really the ones that are well-positioned. They have the arenas and the halls that they can open. And the importance of protecting our vulnerable during these extended heat waves. So if you haven't seen it, ask your CAO. They, it should have been sent out to everybody. And then Dr. Paul was sitting on a Senate Committee, which is looking at tabling a bill to increase funding for mental health and addiction. So busy times at the health unit. And do you have anything to add, councillor McGillis?
No, I think you pretty well covered everything. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions? Councillor Broad, do you have a mic on?
No.
I thought that was for a question. Sorry. Glenn Stordun, that's what it's for, it's for Glenn Stordun Lodge. I got it. He's ahead of me.
Thank you, Warden. Councillor McDonald, I had the opportunity to meet our new administrator, Cathy Richet. So she's hit the ground running. We had a great update and report from her, reviewed the occupancy stats and we're on track. So excited to have some new leadership with some experience in that field to take us to the next level. So we had a great, great meeting and that was her first opportunity to chat with us. So.
Thank you. Any questions? No. St. Lawrence River Institute, no meeting. Raising Southern Nation Source Protection, nothing. Municipal Advisory, Agonquin Land Claim, nothing. Regional Incentives Program, nothing. Rural Education, no. Social Development Council, councillor Williams?
Yeah, nothing much to report other than the Social Development Council with the departure of Carolina Bear is in the midst of doing some restructuring and there will be more news coming in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Forest Group, there was no meeting. Border Mayors Alliance, anything?
Yeah, just on a national stage, not a whole lot of news happening, but interesting enough, mayors on the American side from Malone to Augsburg are now really reaching out and trying to promote as the impact is really starting to affect the municipalities, townships, towns on the other side of the river. So we're seeing them now starting to reach out to us. So more to come.
Thank you. We're on to key information. So the July 2025 capital update, and I believe Mr. Grant's going to speak to this.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Warden, members of council.
Okay, so the following capital roads projects are designed to improve road quality and safety. These projects focus on repairs, resurfacing and data collection to insert better, more reliable transportation network. As the end of June, the recycling tender has been fully completed except for County Road Two, which is a provisional item. The recycling work commenced on May 13th and was completed June 26th. Total of 47 kilometers of roadway was recycled in just 31 days, setting a record for efficiency. So before asphalt paving begins on our recycled roads, the recycled material is tested, field samples are reviewed and approved to ensure they meet municipal standards. Once staff approves the results, the construction zone is transferred to our paving contractor. It is the paving contractor's responsibility upon construction zone transfer to have all recycled material covered within 30 days. The hot mix paving is progressing very well behind the recycling operations and has already reached substantial completion, meaning that all of the roads have been paved with the exception of our provisional item, which is County Road Two. So to add to that, there are still some outstanding items to be completed, so such as paved intersections, driveway tie-ins for both gravel and asphalt and some shouldering operations. The paving work started June 6th and was substantially completed July, yes, sorry, July 7th. The work was also completed in record time, completing 52 kilometers of roadway, taking 24 paving days. Contributing factors to both the Cyrim and Hot Mix achievements was due to council's receptiveness to adopt the four-year efficiency plan. These efficiencies have resulted in cost savings to the county and reduced traffic delays for the traveling public. Both recycling and Hot Mix tenders include an asphalt cement price index clause allowing cost adjustments when price fluctuations exceed 5% from tender opening. In recent months, there have been significant increases, rising by 19 and a half percent in May and 19.7% in June. The asphalt cement increase has had a significant financial impact on both recycling and Hot Mix contracts. These additional costs have affected the approved project scopes and budget allocation for our 2025 capital program. So following a thorough assessment of the financial implications, staff have determined that provisional item two, which would be our County Road Two, from County Road 23 easterly to the Quebec border, which is approximately 3.37 kilometers, will be removed from the 2025 capital work plan. This decision has been made in order to maintain budgetary balance and with any surplus funds being redirected to offset the AC index cost to be incurred on the County Road 22 reconstruction project. So surface renewal overlay, the work for our municipal partners commenced early June with all scheduled items for the township of North Glengarry now completed. Municipal partners have recently confirmed that their underground preparatory work has been completed and the paving activities can be scheduled. So coordination between municipal and SDG counties have been, staff remain ongoing, allowing county staff to inform contractors of any work requirements. Micro-surfacing, the micro-surfacing tender has been completed in its entirety. The work commenced on July 7th and was completed July 10th. Over the course of four days, a total of 12 kilometers of roadway was sealed. Our traffic counting and sign retroreflective operations are completed in-house with student forces. There are approximately 100 counts to be completed with each count location being completed on three separate occasions over the course of the summer. The first and second rounds of traffic counting has been completed with the third underway. Retroreflectivity work has been completed. Student forces scanned a total of 7,300 regulatory signs. Sign scanning forms part of our requirement to meet minimum maintenance standards. Staff are currently collaborating with the township of North Dundas, converting their current sign inventory to our collection and barcode procedures. The specialty marking contract is approximately 50% complete. The remaining work is located within or near our scheduled 2025 construction work and is being deferred until, to ensure that the pavement markings are placed in locations where they would be, where, sorry, locations where they would later be removed or need to be reinstalled. The completion of the remaining pavement marking work is being strategically scheduled to maximize quantity installation in construction areas to maximize contract efficiency. Our center line, this project has been awarded and is expected to begin mid-August. We, staff has been in contact with the contractor who typically arrive mid-July. Due to weather-related delays earlier in the season, operations have been set back by approximately three to four weeks. If the contractor is in the area earlier than anticipated, staff has requested the center line markings be completed on the new pavements. Culvert lining, culvert lining work is currently in progress. The contractor has completed locates and is waiting on final confirmation. In the meantime, preparatory work has begun. The contractor is fleshing the culverts in preparation for the lining process. The lining process is expected to begin mid to late July. Guide rail, the original tender is 100% complete. As new damages caused by collisions, additional work may be required. County Road 22, construction activities on County Road 22 are progressing well. The contractor has completed topsoil stripping, benching and granular reinstatement to accommodate the new platform width on the north side. Entrance culverts and ditch insulation on the north side have also been completed except for entrances that lay within the municipal drains. This work will be completed in the near future now that water restrictions have been lifted. All road widening operations are scheduled to be completed for the Highland Game weekend. So weather impacts, we received a significant storm event through our construction site July 2nd with approximately four inches of rainfall, inches of rainfall within an hour, an hour and a half. The intense rainfall overwhelmed municipal drains and led to multiple entrance culverts washout. The hydraulic force during the event was substantial, resulting not only in culvert entrance washouts, but causing deformation of a high-density polyethylene culvert. Just like to take the time to kind of acknowledge our onsite field staff, Ben Simfield and AL Blair's Matthew Villeneuve. During the weather event, they took every precaution to ensure that the area was safe and residents were accommodated. With that said, any questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. Grant, questions? I got Councilor McGillis and then Councilor Landry.
Thank you, Warden. I just wanted to say thank you very much. We had the roads that were done in South Stormont, the county roads, 15, 36, 18, great job. Heard a lot of compliments. I like how wide they're going. And also, you know, the traffic control was second to none. They did a fantastic job, so just pass that on and to all involved too as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Landry?
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. So no, again Dana, thanks for the updates. A few things, maybe you can give me some or some of the information in regards to County Road 22. So I know there was restrictions on with, through the Drainage Act, so we had to wait. So now maybe from where we are and to the finish line, do you have sort of a brief overview of are we on par with our end date and what is the end date as far as getting this project finalized?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, so as of July 15th, in-water work within the municipal drains can happen. Primary focus at this time is to ensure that all the benching is completed on the south side of County Road 22 so that safe passage can be completed for the Highland Games. So that right now is our priority. As far as scheduling is concerned, we anticipate being completed by October 31st. We were, I was being optimistic that we could get some of the road kind of paved and we would have a nice surface, but we fell a little short on that one.
Go ahead.
Subsequent on another subject. So in line with the bridges, so I like the word when you're mentioning about record pace. So I'm not sure where it stands, but I know for my sake, the Grady Bridge, myself, I got caught where I was in La La Land and drove all the way down and realized I can't go through here and had to turn around. So if I'm going to do it, I'm sure there's many more. Is there a way maybe, just especially in this case, it's a full closure? So if there is updates or just how things are going, I often get asked, hey, what's going on with the Grady Bridge? So if possible, updates, just something by email, quick notes to give us an idea where we stand. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Anything further? Councilor McDonald and Councilor Williams?
Thank you. And it's just a comment or two comments would be, I think that efficiency was a decision of you through Ben, so thank you for bringing that efficiency of moving around and then for all of us around the table. What a great opportunity to rethink how we can do our budgets when the counties are near, that we can get more done in that particular year because I understand there might be like 20% savings for our own projects when you're around. So I think this is just an excellent example of government efficiency.
Thank you. Councilor Williams?
Yes, compliments on all of the work that's getting done. Just a question with regards to the drainage on County Road 22 in that big storm that happened and some of the flooded driveways and that kind of thing. I just, you know, if that, if that weather event was to repeat itself, how would the drainage work, you know, manage that now?
That's a great question. So as far as County Road 22, the drainage report that we are following meets the 100 year storm. Everything is being designed or constructed to meet those standards. I believe once that we get everything cleaned out on our roadside dishes, there will be more than enough storage capacity there for, for these type of events. It just, at this time, we were still under construction, not all of that ditch was prepared for, for that new capacity.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? I'll just add one, County Road 17, excellent job. I know that we got a lift on that, but they went in ahead of time and built up a little on the shoulders where it had settled and so forth, and it made quite a difference. A lot of comments from the residents that seemed like you guys went over and above, so very happy. Next one is capital bridge update, Mr. Bernal.
Tough act to follow. Good morning, council. This morning, I'll be providing you with an update on the progress of our 2025 capital projects. This year, SDG Counties has budgeted roughly $5 million worth of capital work to be completed in 2025. So the Increment Bridge, it's one of our larger scale projects for 2025. It remains on a steady pace and looks to have no issues being completed by October 20th. Since our last council meeting, we have seen quite a bit of work to take place. Crews have completed installation of the new bridge deck, decorative burial wall, approach slabs and curb and gutter. Waterproofing actually took place on Friday and it's actually being paved as this meeting's happening. So in the next couple of days, we should see a switch over to stage two. So these are just some kind of pictures that have happened through the site progress. On the left side, you'll see we actually had to saw cut and separate all the girders. And then on the other side is when we're actually able to lift them out with the crane. You might have seen some of this already on our social media platforms. I know Todd's done a great job at keeping the residents up to date. These are our new steel beam girders we bought a couple of years ago and are finally getting to install. So as you can see on the left side, they're going in and then on the right side, we have our operation for our deck placement. And this is what we currently look like. So we had a new decorative burial wall go up. This was an opportunity for us being in a village that we were able to, you know, do something a little fancier rather than just a straight plain parapet wall. So we were pretty happy with the outcome and look forward to stage two and repeating the process. Switching focus to the Lunenburg Bridge. So this is a registered frame structure that we've been keeping an eye on for the last couple of years. This progress, or this project, I should say, is progressing well and remains on schedule to finish around September 12th. Since the last council meeting, actually quite a bit has happened here. We've had the new concrete deck overlay, parapet wall and bridge deck waterproofing has taken place. We've actually switched over to stage two already and are pretty deep into the removal process. So again, this is kind of a configuration of what it looked like before. So we used to have a raised curb with concrete posts and a steel beam guide rail attached to it. It was time for an upgrade as a lot of these posts had degraded. On the right side, you'll see we've scarified the deck and then along the edge, we've done some additional removals to tie in some new steel. And you're going to see quite a galvanized look here on the left side. So we've added in a lot of new steel for the new parapet wall and overhang and then we've added some mesh on the deck just for additional reinforcement that'll help us with our crack control on the structure moving forward. And this is us in the action, getting a lift of asphalt over it just before we switch traffic. So if you haven't driven through there, it, a lot's happened since we got going. And Mr. Landry, Grady's Bridge. So we did close that on July 7th. Grady's Bridge is receiving a minor rehab. This is one that we were actually able to get in and kind of make a strategic investment at the right time. The existing walls, the deck, the girders, everything's in, in a fit state of condition. So this was a good chance for us to get in and swap the leaking expansion joints and replace the approach slabs that are at the end of their current service life. As of right now, things are on track for completion in September 16th. And we'll see how things progress, but there's always a chance we could finish a little early there. So we are still fairly early on in the process here, but here's some pictures of us taking out the old expansion joints. So on the right side, it's been fully removed. This week, actually, they'll be removing the remainder of the approach slab. So by the end of the week, we hope the removals will be nearly complete. Structure reconstruction coming soon. So on to the Dixon Creek or culvert projects. This one, we're actually replacing the existing 5.6 by 2.8 meter corrugated steel pipe with a new 3.6 by 2.4 concrete box. This structure was actually able to be downsized due to a previous hydraulic review, which was approved by the Conservation Authority. The concrete structures are sourced through our large structure procurement tender and will be installed as part of our twin install package that we'd approved and awarded to Goldie Moore. This structure is scheduled to be replaced between August 11th and 15th. So we've coordinated with South Stormont Transportation Staff and we'll actually be using Dixon Road, Hoopel 7th and McCray during the closure. Again, we're going to limit these closure dates to a five day. Other work will be completed before and after that timeframe, but just to try and minimize the local impact, we really tried to keep closure dates to five days. Here's just a quick sketch of what we would have provided to the contractors during bidding, just to give you an idea of what they're looking at when we're on site. Next up, we have the Sandy Creek Culvert replacement. So this existing 3.9 by 2.7 corrugated steel pipe, we'll also see a new 3.3 by 2.7 concrete box. This is actually a project with a, we've taken on- This is actually a project that we've taken on in-house, so we've started sourcing cranes and purchasing material for the project and are pretty deep into the planning stages of it. So we'll be working with our Winchester Springs Petrol Yard to complete that that installation. This work is slated to occur between August 5th and 15th. And this is just a photo of what our shop drawings would have looked like for when we purchased our box culverts or our large procurement plan, tender, sorry. The Wiley Creek Culvert replacement. So this is a 3 meter by 1.96 steel culvert that is also being replaced with a 3 meter by 1.8 concrete box. These have also been produced by Forterra Pipe and Precast through our large procurement tender. Goldie Moore is actually on site as we speak. They've closed SDG 43 this morning and are and should have it reopened by Friday afternoon. Again, here's a shot of the detour. We didn't have a lot of great county road options here, so we did have to have to invite or ask our friends at North Undest Township to help us out on this one. So we will be taking County Road 1 to the north, Laughlin Ridge Road, the east and west section, and back down to 43 on the west side. And again, just another quick photo of what the tender package would have looked like when Goldie Moore was bidding on the project. Our 2025 regional OSIM assignment. This year, regionally, SDG and its municipal partners joined forces for an approximate 400 structure OSIM assignment. HP Engineering was this successful firm and is currently working westerly through the counties. They've currently completed all the fieldwork for the North Glengarry and South Glengarry areas and are working their way through the Stormont areas right now. We're roughly 50% complete this fieldwork. HP estimates that by the end of the month, we should be fairly close to fairly close to done the fieldwork. HP is to submit all draft reports by September 26 to all municipalities, so I'm sure you will see presentations coming back to your council at a later date. This is one we've been working with South Glengarry on, so we've kind of joined forces here for the rehabilitation of the Third Line Bridge. SDG's been acting in a supporting role during the designing and tendering of the project. This one was awarded to Clearwater Structures, and they've also just got it going today. So Third Line Road was closed this morning, so we'll be going out there later today to have a look and see how things are starting off. This is a project that'll be done through a cost recovery model as we will be doing the project administration on behalf of the township. So here's a little before and after just of what the tender plans look like for the project that Clearwater would have bid on. And that sums it all up for all the projects. So if you guys have any questions on any of them, by all means, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Questions and comments? Counselor Landry?
Not so much a question, so just I apologize, I kind of jumped ahead. So Dana, you're off the hook. Matt, I didn't hear you say anything about record pace, but I do appreciate the fact that you appear to be still in line for the mid-September, so thank you very much.
Anything further? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. I'd just like to say, we hope to continue this arrangement moving forward. We're glad to have local resources that take you up on your offer, and it's been very helpful. I believe it has the construction, or sorry, the contract administration is about one-third the cost of where it was. So like they you get paid back at the rate that is made, and then then we save 66%. So that's that's another government efficiency win, and I'd like to thank the Transportation Department for for both of them.
Thank you for that. South Glengarry, very much, very happy with the agreement we've got, we're going forward. Anything further? Thank you very much. Moving on to draft council remuneration bylaw, and Ms. Castleman.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden, if you turn your attention to page 68 of your agenda package, you'll see a draft proposed bylaw for the Council Remuneration and Conference Bylaw. So each term of council, we review this bylaw. The Director of Financial Services, the CIO, and myself, we review the bylaw and just bring it in into alignment with current policies and best practices. So we have made a few changes, just draft changes for consideration. They're reflected in red in your package, and they include annual updates to the annual honorariums. So these amounts have been updated to reflect current rates. Their increase is based on our yearly CPI policy. Council meeting allowance, we've revised the meeting allowance rates and added a half day per diem rate. We received a little bit of feedback from some of you requesting a half day per diem rate, so we've added that into the draft bylaw. So for any meetings that are less than four hours, it would be $109.75. And then for meetings that exceed four hours, it would be $219.49. CPI policy, we've added in the wording that reflects our SDG County CPI policy. Conferences, conference expenses for the warden, council, and committee board members has been increased, just to bring it in line with hotel costs, meals, rising costs. So it's $675 per day to a maximum of $2,025. This includes coverage for accommodation, transportation, and meals. And then the warden's banquet, we just upped that from $5,000 to $7,000 to bring it in line with what we have in our budget right now. A portion of this budget is offset by ticket sales, of course. So we're just seeking feedback on the proposed changes. We've also, on page two of my report, just included a nice little graph of regional data on remuneration from across EOWC municipalities. So we're hoping that you can provide us with some feedback, and we can bring the next form of the draft to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and appreciate you bringing this forward. It's a topic that I think we all find kind of uncomfortable to talk about sometimes because you kind of have to set your own your own remuneration or your own pay, and it it's not comfortable, nobody nobody is, but I think sometimes it does need to be talked about and to keep things current and to keep the interest in people wanting to be on county council and on on our local councils. So I've got Counselor McDonald here. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, it is uncomfortable, but I'm not feeling uncomfortable. I I feel that we need to be paid properly for what we do, and in this day and age of social media, there are more and more pressures being put on us that we're seeing. Just want to start with the county meeting, county, the council meeting allowance, revising it to 109.75 for up to four hours. I think it's why are we taking a step backwards? And if any of us are coming to a meeting in Cornwall, generally, our meetings use joint liaison is about an hour, usually an hour and a half, sometimes we go as far as two hours. I spend 45 minutes getting here, 45 minutes getting home, so I my whole morning is done. And I can imagine that some people that work in jobs, say Jason Nick, there's a, you know, a job that he goes to during the day, it's he's taking a morning off, and I, you know, I just I don't agree with that. Going into the the remuneration, we are at the lowest. If you take out Prince Edward County, which is a single tier, and Coortha Lakes, which is a single tier, the average for a county councillor is almost 25,000, and we are at 15,663. I'm not advocating for us to go crazy like that, but I think that there has to be an increase and and, you know, you you hit the nail on the head. We're already having a hard enough time getting people to to put their names in in our local councils and to put their names forward to run for politics, and it doesn't help when it's the compensation is very low. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to take a little lean here and make a comment. I'm one of the ones that asks for the half day, and I understand 100% where you're coming from, because there are meetings that I have that are three hours, but I may have three hours of reading ahead of time. But there are a few meetings I've noticed, and I didn't really get much of this till I became warden, but there are a few meetings that are three quarter of an hour, an hour, Zoom meeting at home, just a quick update on something. And I was just kind of torn, I didn't, so I wasn't putting some of them in, or I was adding a couple together and calling it one one per diem. I just felt uncomfortable, you know, because I didn't even have to leave home. I'd go in, left my work pants on, put a clean shirt on, sat at the computer for, you know, an hour or so, took it off, went back back to work. So I just, I was wondering if there could be something for those. But it's going to have to be up to the individual in some ways, because some of those these meetings where you've got, you know, a couple hundred pages of reading and maybe some phone calls to make ahead of time, you do spend as much time before the meeting as you do during the meeting. So I'm not sure the answer there, but I'm one of the ones that was kind of suggesting that. So do you want to rebuttal there?
Yeah, I just, I want to say that definitely when you're warden, there are a lot more of those kinds of meetings, you know, showing up for a public planning meeting that sometimes lasts 15 minutes or 10 minutes as warden when you come to those. I I just think that giving it a blanket and saying that over four hours for that to be to be what the remuneration is, I think is a little extensive, but I definitely see it when you are the warden.
Well, maybe it could be addressed that the warden has that option then for, you know, some of these quick little meetings that are maybe just an update or something so that he you don't end up getting nothing for it, but you you don't feel comfortable putting in a full diem. I'm open to that. Anyway, I better not talk too much up here. I'll move on to Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, I remember exactly the same thing when I was warden, and I think, you know, if people just use their own judgment on these things, that then I think that would go a long way. Because I completely agree with Counselor McDonald, like, you know, it's not often you see a four-hour meeting. However, a three-hour meeting with, you know, an hour and a half of preparation and then the travel and all the rest of it, you know, you're at least at least half your day is done. And in some cases with travel, I've traveled, I've had to travel, you know, three hours to a meeting, then have a two-hour meeting, and travel three hours back. Well, there's your day, you know, for 100 bucks. I don't think so. And furthermore, you know, we need to acknowledge that, you know, the days of municipal councillors, you know, volunteering their time, that it's their duty to to give their time for for nothing or little, in my view, is over. Our time is as valuable as anybody else's, and we ought to be compensated accordingly. And I think, you know, we need to acknowledge that not on the upper tier, on our lower tiers, that we need to be paid fairly for our time. So, you know, I think we should leave the the meeting schedule as it is, and and I agree with Counselor McDonald that we do need to to relook at the, what do they, what's it called?
Remuneration.
Remuneration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further comments? Counselor Bursho?
Thank you, Warden. I also agree with Counselor McDonald that we need to review our remuneration because we are at the bottom scale. I don't think Leeds-Grenville is that much bigger than SDG, and if you compare, we're almost at half their salary. I don't think, I'm not saying that we should double our salary, but it needs to come up, and maybe we should vote or decide on that today.
Thank you. Counselor Landry, and then Counselor Fraser.
Yeah, so if I just chime in, I do agree with the comments that are being made around the table, and you look at the remuneration at the at the upper tier level, but I find it also reflects the lower tier, and it's the thing where we're as a group of six, and it kind of relates to, okay, where is everybody at? So if we kind of just always feel like, I know we're representing our constituents, but at the same time, to get somebody to come and put their name forward, it's coming to a point where with the online, let's call it abuse, because in many cases, that's what it is, that easy task of being on your in front of your laptop, and it just takes a toll on everybody. There's lots of people that are going to say, why am I doing it? So it's not, it reflects, I think, as a whole, where where we stand as far as just looking at the comparables that we have in front of us. Just a thought.
And Counselor McDonald, the middle Counselor McDonald, I've got three of them on one row here.
We're taking over. That's the plan. As someone who has the least financial gain, you know, I feel like I can be a little impartial here and say I don't see why SDG should be the lowest paid county council. I don't think anyone here, your time is worth anyone, any less than anyone else in Leeds-Grenville or wherever you want to pick, being at the bottom doesn't look like a good thing. And if you are looking to attract folks who are trying to work other jobs and make decisions about how they pay their bills, and if they want to make time to be on a local council and county council, then then this really helps because times are tough right now, and it's not that easy to be giving up hours of work if you're if you're not going to be able to be compensated. So I think you'll get a higher quality people to bring their names forward. So I support the comments made by everyone.
Okay, Counselor Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think it was at Roma I was speaking to some members of the Prescott-Russell, upper tier, yeah, county council from Prescott-Russell. They have a formula that use, are we using, and I look at Ms. Castleman, are we using a formula to to achieve the number that we have in front of us for SDG, or is that just the number that we use?
I'll have to defer that to our treasurer. No formula. Nope.
There's a formula that Prescott-Russell uses that's based on population. And when I look at our number for the for the deputy warden, no, for the councillor deputy warden, they're three times, they're 300% more. Their population isn't 300% greater than ours. So maybe that formula might be something that would support the remuneration and rejigging that whole thing, and then it would be somewhat entrenched with growth, and that would level the playing field. And it's surprising, when I was speaking to Counselor Riappel in at Roma, he would talk about how they achieve that number, and and we were chuckling about the difference, the discrepancy. They are larger than we are, but not that much larger to cause such. So I think, I don't have that number, the dollar figure they use per population, per capita, but it would it would change the game.
I'm going to ask a question. Is there anybody here that doesn't want us to revisit this and maybe see if we can't get more in line and more into the the mid-middle or or something sort of like that? I'm just, I know Ms. Adams would like to speak, and I would just like to give her a little bit of where we're where her head's at. Anybody that's against us looking at revisiting this and getting it maybe to where it should be, a little higher? All right, so that gives you something to, go ahead, Maureen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I was just gonna, I was just going to suggest that we could take this back and come back with some options for council. We could also look at phasing it in over a period of time, but we can, if we have that direction from council, we'll go back and and we can provide something and maybe a little bit more information. There were a couple of questions about Leeds and Grenville and Prescott-Russell. We could maybe gather some of that and come back to council.
Thank you. I got Counselor Gendel.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. I just wanted to note that I think in 2018, when I was first elected to South Stormont Council, we just had an independent review of the compensation. I think that's the way to go, so it takes it out of our hands, and we have a third-party look at comparable-sized counties, because not all counties are structured the same in terms of workload, services, things like that, so they can look at comparables, what's different, what's the same, and then come back and say what's what's appropriate, and then we can vote on it thereafter.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald?
I would just like to back Counselor Fraser. I like the idea of it being like a formula, much like at the lower tiers, we go up a certain amount, because you don't want it to be a discussion all the time. It should be something that is fairly automatic. We may be different than Prescott-Russell, but perhaps that adjusts our number down or upwards or something like that, because, yeah, it's always tough whenever you have to discuss your own remuneration, so you want to make it as automatic as possible and as fair as possible, because ultimately, like, we want to, like, we want good candidates, and we also have to factor in that we are in the in the pockets of our our public too. So like, that's the the fair balance. I'm not trying to be overly political with that, just like, we want better people here, but we also don't want to take away from people who have less in our communities. So that's why I think Counselor McDonald was looking at me typically, I'm the anti-spending guy. I'm, oh, at the door, yeah. But I think a fair review, we should always look at these things and make them so that we don't have these conversations too often, it's just automatic. So I appreciate Counselor Fraser meant bringing that point up, because I did not know that, and then Counselor Gendel for saying it might be different, but like, please, from my perspective, explore that. Glad to look at this.
Thank you. Anything further? I think staff has some direction then that we'd like to have this looked into, maybe come back with some options and kind of give us an idea. I was quite surprised to realize we were the lowest, and in some cases, quite a bit lower. I think we all know the pressures that are on us. To give you a little example, I had a contractor in our yard working the other day, and someone drove in and was fairly adamant about an issue that's happening in our township, and went on for a half an hour or so, and the contractor was working in the distance, and he came over to me after, he said, you get people actually drive in your yard and, you know, talk to you about things and want to discuss things? Well, it happens quite often in the public, you know, like, we are pretty relatable to our to our constituents, and I think the demands on us are quite a bit, so, thank you. Where are we now? Where are we now? SDG Library 2025 Annual Report. Counselor, or not Counselor Luck, Director Luck. She was Counselor Luck at one time.
Okay. So today, I would like to talk to everyone about the annual report from 2024. So each year, public libraries across the province of Ontario must complete the annual survey of public libraries, which requires libraries to report on several key metrics, including the use of technology and digital services and the types of activities and programs they offer. The government publishes reports on the survey results through the Ontario Public Library Statistics Program. This collection of statistical information has been compiled to form the annual report, offering members of the public a glimpse into the year of the life of the SDG library. The annual report that you see here was beautifully created by our communications and marketing coordinator. It can be accessed online on the SDG library's website or in physical format at any one of our 15 library branches. So we begin the annual report with an opening statement from the SDG library's board chair, Margaret McDonald, and myself, with a reflection on the accomplishments of 2024. The SDG library, as everyone here in the room knows, consists of 15 branches, three express depots, and a courier truck that connects this rural network across the counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry. In 2024, we employed 48 staff members across our branch network and administration office. We welcomed 58 library volunteers of all ages, and we're fortunate to have five friends of the library groups. In 2024, the collection grew to consist of over 100,000 English materials and over 30,000 French material, in the form of books, CDs, DVDs, eBooks, e-audio books, and periodicals. In 2024, the SDG library circulated over 200,000 physical items and over 120,000 digital items. This represents a 2.8% overall increase in English circulation, including a 3.3% increase in adult circulation, a 1.9% increase in children's circulation, and a 5.7% increase in teen circulation compared to 2023. The library welcomed over 100,000 visitors in 2024, which amounted to a 10% increase in visitors compared to 2023. There were over 6,000 unique borrowers in 2024, which represents a 6.8% increase in borrowers compared to 2023. There were 2,100 new library members in 2024, which represents a 3.2% increase in new members compared to 2023. The SDG library outfits the 15 branches with 44 public access computers. The computer stations were used for nearly 8,000 hours in 2024. This represents a 19.8% increase in number of hours compared to 2023. SDG library programs continue to draw a diverse and engaged group of attendees, welcoming nearly 15,000 people. In comparison to 2023, this represents an 11.6% increase in adult attendance, a 16.1% increase in children's attendance, and a 46.9% increase in teen attendance. Each year, SDG library delivers two flagship literacy programs that promote reading and lifelong learning, the SDG Reads and TD Summer Reading Club. In 2024, the SDG library welcomed 89 community members for the SDG Reads evening event featuring Canadian author Craig Shreef, while the 15 branches welcomed over 1,000 attendees to the library's TD Summer Reading Club over the span of the summer. In 2024, the SDG library established a strategic partnership with the Glengarry Memorial Hospital in Alexandria. The library went fine-free, and we launched the charitable initiative Pages for Presence, which focuses all on reducing social barriers. In 2024, the SDG library welcomed 270 classroom visits. We conducted 272 visits to long-term care homes and retirement homes. We attended 24 community events, which resulted in over 2,700 interactions with community members. We are incredibly proud of everything that the SDG library achieved in 2024. These successes were made possible by the outstanding staff, whose dedication, creativity, and unwavering commitment to serving the community shine through in all that they do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions? Counselor Brown.
Sure, I guess it wouldn't be a risk if I didn't talk about the library more. I didn't bring any props today, but a few comments. Thank you for the presentation, Director Luck. I would like to say that we have an incredible committee at council. So Margaret McDonald, Jim Alguire, Joan McCaslin, our community folks that are on the committee that join, Counselor Landry, McDonald, Fraser, and I. We are super proud of each other and super proud of what the library delivers to our communities. I know it's a large budget item of $3 million, where our, our funding is, you know, less than a couple hundred thousand dollars. And for us, it's really important that we continue to grow circulation, membership, and activities in the library without adding more staff or more resources. And that's what we've been focused on, and I want to commend Director Luck. This is wrapping up our two years, we're at a year and a half with us, how well we've done and how well we continue to serve our communities when it comes to libraries.
Thank you very much for that. Anything further? All right, we're going on to SDG Library's Social Return on Investment, and it's Director Luck again.
Thank you. I'm going to change pace a little bit this time and talk to you about the Value Ontario Libraries Toolkit and how that represents a social return on investment. So public libraries are important cultural and social infrastructure for communities they serve. They deliver services that provide communities with educational and cultural support, inclusion, reconciliation, and civic engagement. Libraries pride themselves in providing a safe and welcoming space for everyone. The Valuing Ontario Libraries Toolkit, which I'll refer to as VOLT, was developed between Ontario Library Services and the Nordic Institute of Algoa University to assist public libraries measure and demonstrate their value and impact within their community. The library value report that was created with this toolkit is made up of two main components, a community profile and the social return on investment value calculations. The community profile provides an overview of the SDG library's impact in the community, while the social return on investment calculates a dollar value of a good program or service that is offered at no charge. The toolkit uses information gathered from census data, the provincial annual survey, and the SDG library's internal statistical information. Using the gathered information, the toolkit calculates a social return on investment based on seven domains of impact. The first being education. This domain is designed to reflect the economic benefit of access to information, the number of children and teen programming, and the number of hours spent welcoming classroom visits. Our second domain is culture. This domain focuses on the economic benefit of special collections and other materials related to the culture of SDG, the economic benefit of the promotion of local cultural and historical events, programs, advertising space, and information services about the SDG area, and the economic benefit of cultural events. Our third domain is inclusion and wellbeing. This domain focuses on the benefits of an accessible collection, so whether it be large print or Braille, the economic benefit of internet, and the economic benefit of social and health-related programming at the SDG library. Our fourth domain is entertainment and leisure. This domain focuses on the economic benefit of recreational reading, viewing, listening, adult programming, and the overall economic benefit of an SDG library membership. For economic development, the benefit of employment, training, and development reflects the economic benefits that circulate within the community through the staff that are compensated for their labor here at the SDG library. This domain focuses on the economic benefit of self-generated revenue, so for example, donations, employment, funding, fees, and grants. Our sixth domain is the civic engagement, and this domain focuses on the economic benefit of volunteer hours, including adults, board members, community hours, and student co-ops, as well as the economic benefit of community connections, including our friends of the library groups, cultural partnerships, local school board partnerships, social services, government services, and community development agencies. Lastly, we have our space. Now, this domain focuses on the economic development, or sorry, economic benefit of the SDG library's meeting space and the general use of the library space itself. What you'll see below each of these domains is the actual calculated benefit of each. Based on analysis of the impacts made by the SDG library in 2024, across more than 20 unique indicators in seven unique domains, we have calculated that the SDG library provides an overall economic benefit to the community in the amount of nearly $16.5 million. This equates to a benefit of $228 per permanent resident, or based on our census data, $501 per household. This also means that for every one hour that the SDG library is open to the public, we generate $431 of economic benefit. Lastly, for every $1 invested into the library, the SDG library generates a social return on investment of $6.21. This concludes what I'm just trying to, I guess, summarize in terms of, you know, you sit across county council table and you decide to put money into the library. Based on the information from my annual report, the library is well-used, is well-loved, and it has a great social return on investment. So thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. Definitely opened your eyes and kind of makes you think of it differently, especially for somebody like myself, not on the library board, hasn't, hasn't been on the library board. Comments, questions? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, and through Mr. Warden, that number on education, if you figure going to university now, say $15,000, and I don't know, it was $6,000 whenever I went, and that was 17 years ago, that $15,000 for tuition, that's like sending 170 people to, to university every year, which is quite incredible in terms of the benefit of the learning power of a library.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Counselor Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. No, it's just a comment about the, the information provided by Director Luck in this social return on investment. It is, it is a start, a positive reminder of the benefit of the library whenever I, esoteric sort of thinking of, of if everyone was to read, everyone was to socialize, everyone was to engage, what is the benefit to a community? And, and this outlines, I think this is what this outlines, and the best I can understand it. I'm not a financial guy or a numbers guy, but there is a benefit, and to have it drilled down, distilled, where we can see the positive benefit of the library, it, it makes, I'm sure, all of us quite proud to, to sit on the library board and, and to promote the benefit of the library, not just to this group, but as we're out and about in the public. And this further reinforces the need to promote the use of the library, but also to promote the, the preservation of the library and, and all of that. So, thank you for allowing me to be on the soapbox, and thank you.
Anytime. Anything further? Thank you very much. We are going on to SDG County's Municipal Summit 2025. CEO Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So we have had a SDG summit a few times. We had one last year. We had very good feedback from the one that we had last year. I think the townships appreciated it because it provided an opportunity for some networking and getting together. We wanted to seek direction from council if they'd like us to pursue another date this year. We've indicated a couple of dates in September and October, just to allow for a bit of discussion, but we would be willing to host an event at any time that Council might deem to be a good date, but we're looking for feedback. Last year, we invited each of the townships to do a presentation, and we also had a couple of outside presenters come in. So I think we would follow the same format if council liked that, or again, we're happy to, to do whatever council might think is worthwhile.
Thank you. I did enjoy the summit last year. Questions, comments? Counselor McDonald, then the other Counselor. I'm going to go with the fire in first, I saw this end first. Lock.
Age before beauty, or?
Age before beauty. The younger age? Go ahead, yes.
I have neither, I have no beauty, and you have the age. So you, you got everything there. Thursday, October 2nd is an RRCA meeting, so that one, but otherwise, all dates work.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald, at this end.
Yeah, I think it's great that we can get together and each municipality shares something that's new. I mean, for sure, it doesn't just happen on a, every two years or three years, that something great is happening in our municipality. It seems like it's, everybody has wins every year, so I, I think it's very worthwhile to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Fraser?
I look forward to it, and I, and if we're throwing dates around, and I think that is the question, I mean, one of the questions, Thursday, the 25th.
All right. If we, anybody have any dates that don't work for them, that they know of at this point? Any other dates that don't work? CAO, is that enough for you to go on?
Do either of the Fridays work? The 26th or October the 3rd?
The 3rd.
The 3rd? Okay.
Are there thumbs up on that one?
We will, we will send out a date, hold the date to the townships as well, so that everybody gets it on their calendar. Thank you.
Good, thank you. And administrative update?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I've just put together a little summary of my calendar for the month of June. I don't have a whole lot that I've added to the updates. I think you've provided a good summary from the Wardens Caucus. AMO is coming up, August the 17th to the 20th. We have received confirmation of one delegation request with the Ministry of Finance. We're going to talk about the impact assessments and that, I guess, our frustration without that market data being updated from 2016, almost 10 years old. The Ontario East Municipal Conference is September the 17th to the 19th. I don't know if anybody has that on their calendars. Of course, we want everybody to save the date for the Wardens banquet on Saturday, October 25th, and it will be held at Tartan Hall in Williamstown. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Madam CEO?
Oh, through you, Mr. Warden. I have one more item. I received an email yesterday from CAO Mills with the City of Carmel, just providing an update on their org structure announcements. So following this meeting this morning, I will circulate that information to council, the directors, and the CAOs and the townships.
Thank you very much. Any questions on that? Seeing none. I feel like I'm just kind of getting into this wardenship and kind of getting my, my feet wet and kind of know what I'm doing now a little bit, and here we are. It's time to show interest for next year's Warden. So, but it is, I think it is good that we've, we moved it up so that we can kind of get this thing rolling. I think it was very helpful for myself to be able to I think it was very helpful for myself to be able to hang out with Counselor, or Warden McDonald last year, just to kind of get you up to speed a little quicker, because otherwise the year goes by so quick. So, Madam Clerk?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. As per the county's procedural bylaw, a council wishing to be nominated for the position of warden must formally express their interest in the position at the regular July meeting of council, so today we'll ask for expressions of interest, and at the next regular meeting, we'll have our annual election of warden. So, Mr. Warden, I'd ask you now to ask members to come forward with their expressions of interest.
Thank you very much. Expressions of interest. I got, I got Counselor Broad, I got Counselor Landry. Go ahead, Counselor Broad.
Yeah, thank you, Warden. I'd like to express my interest for the role as warden for 2026, and I'm sure we'll, over the next month, have conversations with everybody.
Sorry, my mic. Counselor Landry, go ahead.
And I guess, I hear the same, so I am expressing my interest as warden as well, and look forward to, we have AMO, we'll get a chance to have some good, whole conversations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor McDonald?
Yes, I would like to formally express my interest in congratulating the two candidates in the upcoming election.
There's always got to be a smart ass in the room. Any further expressions of interest? Thank you very much. We'll be in good hands either way next year. Moving on, we are, all right, closed session. Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Bergeron, that council proceeding camera pursuant to Section 239-2A of the Municipal Act 2001, the security of the property of the municipality or local board for an insurance matter, and pursuant to Section 239-2B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, and Section 239-2D, labor relations or employee negotiations for an HR update.
Thank you very much. Y'all heard the motion? Everybody in favor? Let's carry it.
Everybody, we're out of close, or get a motion to move out of close, Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Councilor Bergeron, seconded by Councilor McDonald that council rise and reconvene in open session.
All those in favor, carried, and motion that came from closed?
That's correct. Mr. Worden, this is a motion to approve an enhancement to our SDG County cyber insurance and reads, it's moved by Councilor Broad, seconded by Councilor Laundrie that council approve an enhancement to the SDG County cyber insurance for the period ending June 30th, 2026 at the cost of $4,950 plus HST.
Carried. Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Councilor J. McDonald, seconded by Councilor A. McDonald that bylaw number 5502, being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, and ratify matters dealt with by resolution, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
All those in favor, carried. And I think we're at adjournment. Madam Clerk?
Moved by Councilor McDonald, seconded by Councilor Bergeron that council adjourn to the call of the chair.
All those in favor, that's carried. Thank you everyone.